Hi folks.
Hello.
Greetings, everybody. Oh, I see that we have Assistant Manager Lynda Williams on the air.
I think Robin was, Robin, did you get the request to be my co-host?
Yes, I did. I said, that's fine. I can handle it.
Okay.
Right. Robin is our high-tech council member.
I wouldn't call myself high-tech, maybe medium-tech.
I think Robin, you know, given his youth is something we need to rely on for technology.
Sounds good to me. Don't rely on me.
Okay.
Hello, Shannon.
Okay, I think we'll begin as soon as, like, I think Attorney Bolt is supposed to be here.
He's coming in now.
Oh, good. And so is 908-3220, that's Doug also, isn't it? Yeah.
It is Doug, yes.
Doug is, Doug is super technology. Okay, so I noticed that the time is 5:30, so I'm going to call this to order and Lynda, if you can put it on record. And we, we got a call today that Councilmember Kumar would not be able to be here, but since it's recorded, we're in good shape. And unfortunately, the town manager had a conflict, but we are ably staffed by Lynda and our town attorney. And so I know there was a little bit of confusion about what the topic was going to be tonight, and we, we didn't really meet to prepare an agenda. But so what I'm going to suggest is that we, we do two things tonight. The first is, I believe, that the town attorney is in the process of preparing a memo regarding some protocols for, for our hearings. And, and I, while I don't think he was able to send it in advance, I was hoping that on the spot, he would be able to give a few highlights and then, and then maybe there could be some question and answer. And then after that, I think really the primary purpose of this meeting was supposed to be to begin a discussion of which recommendations regarding building code changes from the stormwater study committee the council wished to move forward on. Is that correct, Mr. President? And we've only scheduled this for a half, for an hour tonight, so perhaps we can start with, you're prepared, Mr. Town Attorney, to, to give a few highlights on, on some protocols you wanted to go over? Is that right?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. I'm not preparing a memo. I'm happy to do so, but.
Okay, well, then you can prepare a memo if the council asks for it afterward. Okay. Because I know that Matt had brought that idea up. But anyway, so we'll spend some time on that. And then, and then I'll turn it over to the president to, to have a brief discussion on maybe some of the potential code amendments you might want to make that came forth from the stormwater committee and how, what the process might be. And we, and we will conclude at 6:30, as had been discussed. So with that, I will turn it over to our distinguished town attorney.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Mayor. And frankly, I think that the town was well-prepared to present to the circuit court in connection with the recent appeal, the administrative record, and the record was in really good shape, such that I don't think we have to amend our protocol at all, really. The particularly helpful was when the mayor went through and described what items were in the record already. And I urge us to continue that practice because it helps everybody understand what is and isn't in the record. And as we've discussed a bit before, you know, we've, we've mentioned now at a couple hearings that there's some things in the code that could use clarification or perhaps replacement and expansion. And so there, I thought, would be the, the focus going forward, not protocol per se, but are we to the point where we want to, for example, you think about the quiet enjoyment language that's in the code? Is it perhaps time to replace that with, with something else? And your possible option would be deleting the broad phrase, you know, quiet enjoyment, and instead detailing with substantive requirements what things relate to quiet enjoyment that the town is regulating, you know? For example, should there be a maximum building height, maximum lot coverage requirement, non-vegetative surface coverage requirement, you know, additional setbacks, wall plane length restriction, wall plate height restriction, these, these types of architectural building tools, sculpting tools that can help limit the mass and scale of structures to prevent the feeling of looming for neighbors? And these can be done in combination with stormwater drainage regulations, and so they, they can complement each other. And then lastly, now that the stormwater drainage ordinance has been tested through, you know, one hearing, as we discussed a little bit at the last work session, would the committee or council recommend any, any tweaks to that framework now? So that's basically the general framework that I think happened for the discussion.
I think you also wanted to talk about maybe review again the ex parte rule, and also to talk about the, some of the language that is used during the discussion that, that the, how it's important to not talk about potential changes to the law, but to, because the point of the hearing is for the council to apply the law to the application, not to talk about that, oh, do they have a problem with the law? Or they want to change the law? Because I think that that causes confusion and also might cause a problem if the case is appealed. Is that right?
Yeah, that's right. And it's, it's difficult to not do so, but yet, as the mayor stated, I, I think it would be appropriate for the council at hearings just to apply the code as it is written, and to the extent that areas are identified for clarification or possible amendment, that we should do that separately. Because if, if that's discussed, you know, during the hearing, it might provide a basis for the decision to be challenged. You know, if, if, for example, the majority of the council were to indicate that, you know, that that particular law shouldn't be enforced or isn't clear, you know, that, that, that type of thing might present a problem for us. So it would be better to go ahead and clean up the code to the extent we find anything is falling short or unclear.
And can you also, again, I know, you know, I applaud, you know, I, I know this is, it's very difficult. One of the hardest things that we do is to, is holding these hearings because we really have to be practically trained judges, especially when, when so many of the applicants and the, and the, the neighbors are lawyers. And so, but, but it's just, it's just better that we keep our comments to a minimum so that we don't go off on tangents and start talking about policy or changes. So as the, as the town attorney points out, it could, it could cause a problem that there's an appeal. But also, can you, can you also give another primer on the ex parte rule?
Sure, absolutely.
And, and that's another area where it's, but where the less said, the better too, correct?
Well, it depends on the circumstances. I mean, just by way of general background, again, variance hearings are due process hearings. We need to give the parties ample opportunity to be notified of their interests and the actions that might impact their interests. All parties need to be witness to what evidence is submitted on the record so that they have the opportunity to rebut it. So for that reason, the council members should avoid ex parte communications discussing applications with interested parties off the record. You know, for example, if a neighbor were to come to you and say, "I'm thinking about filing an application for this or that. What do you think my chances are?" You know, obviously, you tell them, "Because I'm a decision maker in that case, I can't discuss it with you. Everything's got to be on the record," but feel free to reach out to staff. If council members visit the site and gain impressions about the property, those impressions should be put on the record. And similarly, if council members do any independent research, the results of that research should be put on the record. And that should be done before the record closes so that other parties have the opportunity to rebut that information. We shouldn't, for example, add stuff to the record for the first time during deliberations when it's too late for the interested parties to rebut or comment on that information. If inadvertently happens, it's easy to correct, and we just always just reopen the record and give the opportunity for other parties to comment. I think that's it, Mr. Mayor. Were there any?
Okay, and then also, okay, and then, and then I'm going to open it up for questions in a minute. But also to clarify that everything you just said about the ex parte rule also applies to the mayor, correct? Because the mayor is potentially a, a, one of the decision makers.
That's right.
So the mayor is supposed to, and do you think it's, would it be necessary for, would it be helpful or necessary for us to have any kind of written documentation about that? That we have? So that, so that, you know, like in the future, when someone gets elected to the council, we give them, we give them a packet or something? I don't know. So Council President Circo, do you have any questions about what the town attorney has raised tonight?
No, thank you for the, just the refresher on ex parte communications.
Okay, thank you. Councilman Barr, do you have any wisdom to share or comments or questions?
It's all clear and already familiar, no questions.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Heller? You're muted.
Not for long. Um, I guess I really don't really understand the ex parte business. Can we explain that for people that are guidance counselors and not lawyers?
Sure. So ex parte basically means off the record. We try to avoid things that are off the record and things, what I mean by things, discussions, you know, in, independent research that might cause the decision maker to be swayed one way or the other without the interested parties in the case having the benefit of knowing that council member has that evidence and didn't have the opportunity to rebut it. So if, for example, let's say a variance is pending, and the applicant were to, were to come to a council member and say, you know, "This is why we want to do this addition. This is why we've designed it this way," so on and so forth. And that discussion leads the council member to believe that the request is appropriate before the decision even takes place. So the, the process might be prejudiced because the council member has already made a decision about the case before the hearings been held and before an opponent to the case has, you know, had the opportunity to present their case, for an example. So we, yes, was there a question?
Hold on a second. You'll get a chance, Councilor, so Councilor Heller, does that answer? Do you have any further questions about that?
I guess the only thing I would ask along that line is, so that means that we have, you know, I read the agenda and I see we have, we're going to, we're going to talk about a variance. And maybe I walk by the house to look at it so I understand it better. That's okay. Because I'm just looking at the house, right?
Correct. Yeah, that's okay. But while you're there.
Don't talk to people.
Don't talk to anybody about it. And you should put your, you know, observations on the record to the extent they have a bearing on your decision so that the interested parties can have the opportunity to comment on or rebut on what you observed. So stated another way, all the evidence that you consider in determining a case should be on the record so that everybody understands what all the evidence is that the council members have. So let's say, for example, an applicant was arguing that they're entitled to a variance for retaining walls because they have steeply sloping topography, and a council member were to walk by the property before the hearing to take a look at the topography and view it from the sidewalk. At the hearing, the council member would say, "I visited the property in preparation for this hearing, and here's what I observed. You know, in my opinion, the topography is steeper than the neighbors or is not steeper than the neighbors." And that way, the applicant and any other interested parties will understand, you know, what evidence you've taken in terms of your, your visual inspection so that they could say, for example, "Well, I understand you, you, you might think my geography is not steep, but maybe you only looked at these two properties. I went around the town and, you know, here's five other examples that I think are, are similar." And that, that sort of placement of the evidence on the record, you know, should be done during the question and comment period, you know, rather than during, let's say, the deliberations after the record is closed, so that if anyone does want to comment, the record's not yet closed.
I get it. Thank you.
So, so does that mean, so, so let's say that Councilor Heller sees an agenda item the Wednesday before the meeting, and she goes, she drives by the property on Friday and has some observations. Would you suggest that she then write those in to be put on the record so that, that all parties can know that in advance of the hearing? Or, or what do you, you know? You know, it's my call to do everything.
I would say no, because we, we try to avoid deliberations among council members prior to the hearings. If one council member were to submit notes into the record before the hearing, that might, that might indicate that the council members are discussing things beforehand, which we want to avoid. I would just say, do it at, do it at the hearing. So during the question and comment period, if a council member observes something that has a bearing on their decision, they could just state that at the hearing during the comment period. I think that works.
Okay, thank you. Councilor Heller, does that, does that answer all your questions? Okay, thank you. I'm sorry, Councilor Ravak. I'll get to you, Councilor Barr, after. Councilor Ravak, did you have some questions of the town attorney?
Oh, no, I was just wondering because on, when, in one of the last variance hearings that we had, someone who was maybe had questions, not the applicant, they waited outside my home until I got home and gave me like a packet of information. Is that legal?
After the hearing?
No, before.
Oh. Yeah, then I would, I would just, I would just say.
Take that information and just say, "Thank you."
I would, I would say, well, don't give it to me. Give it to the town manager, and the town manager will add it to the record.
Okay, okay.
Okay, Councilman Barr, you had another question?
Yeah, and it's about visiting the home. I mean, I actually think it's just good practice by a council member when you've got a building permit application to have a look at the home if it's not highly familiar with you to you already, and, and look around it so that you have an actual visual memory of the home before whatever construction is being done on it or around it. So I certainly don't think a written record is needed off that, and by all means, you have to bring it up, say, "I visited it during the hearing," but it just strikes me as good practice that we should do that.
Well, I'm glad you brought that up, Councilman Barr, because I believe there's a requirement now that applicants submit photos of, or drawings of the property, I think photos maybe. So, so, and I, and I completely understand why it's more powerful or informative to actually go view the property, but I'm wondering if there's any other information that we could ask the applicant to submit in advance that we don't now. I, we do, I, I believe we do require a photo of the property. Isn't that right? Because that's.
Well, a site plan is required.
A site plan.
And elevation drawings of what's proposed. Photographs of existing conditions are often submitted. I don't know off the top of my head, Mr. Mayor, whether that's required. I can look right now. Doug may know. Are you there, Doug? And do you know whether photos are required by the code?
I believe, yeah, I believe it says somewhere in that they are, and we get them about 90% of the time.
Okay.
Sometimes it just doesn't seem relevant.
Okay.
Okay, well, if there are no other questions, I'm going to turn it over for the next, for the remaining time for, to the council president to lead a discussion on the building code proposals that were made by the, by the study committee.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Matt emailed me a nice summary of notes of some of the options that have been presented, but it didn't, it didn't seem as though he sent it to the entire council. Did anybody else receive a four-page list?
Nope.
Nope. Okay. And I don't, I'm not able to share in my current setup, so I'll just go through it, and I can ask Matt to provide it after the meeting. So there, there are a couple of, there are a number of areas where we could, we as a council could take action to update our code. I think the first category or area is clarifying or updating the current stormwater code. For example, let me just read this. New code provisions should clarify that the town prioritizes proposed stormwater management solutions as follows. Stores with full onsite filtration. If that is not fully available, storage with some onsite infiltration and delayed release of stored water that does not infiltrate. And Robin, Matt noted that you proposed a tiered approach, and we could actually spell it out in the code where, you know, conservation landscaping using things such as rain gardens is like the most preferred. Next, there would be structural measures to hold the water, then treatment, and then last but not least would be a variance, you know, if it's just not at all achievable.
No, it's three levels. It's, it's rain gardens, et cetera, landscaping interventions, if you will, which are, I mean, that's at the top. The second one is things like dry wells, which hold the water and dissipate it on the land, and that's, that's, that's their virtue. And then third level is cisterns or tanks which hold the water for a temporary period, but then release it subsequently.
Right. Thanks for clarifying. We might want to, or I think we probably should clarify storage versus treatment of stormwater. And there's the question that Matt noted, what we really want to achieve, what is feasible. So, so these are some thoughts. Before we go on to some other areas, I was just thinking we have a little, like, virtual around-the-table discussion. And I, Robin, very much appreciate your tiered approach. And let's see, who do we have? And we have Debbie and Shannon, but we don't have Kabir. Okay. So, Shannon, what do you think about the need to make some changes in some of these proposed approaches just to help us shape our further debate?
So, um, I mean, this is a totally off-the-record or off-the-subject thing, but, I mean, is there anything that we can do to start pushing Montgomery County to take more, like, important stormwater runoff management practices themselves? Because that will definitely benefit us if they can take a harder hand on it. I don't know if that's possible, but just throwing it out there. Number one. Number two, as I know from my own experience next door, just because you go and put something in, you know, to serve, you know, to be okay for our own town permit, doesn't mean that it works. And so what I'm finding next door to me is it doesn't work. And how are we going to then continue to police all of this stuff? Because we can sit here and say, "Yeah, rain garden this," or, you know, we can say, "Cistern that," or whatever, but when the soil is as it is, there's nothing to say that these things are going to actually work.
Right. The some of that is county, like, county has a requirement to inspect the, the tanks. But other issues are, questions of compliance would be for a town compliance officer.
Right.
Because like, really, who's going around and monitoring any of these dry wells? And, you know, these things that we're telling these people to put in, I, I mean, I don't, I don't know.
The county supposedly, and I, I'm putting supposedly in there, has a once every three-year inspection of the dry wells, except they do not have the staff to be able to do that, so it's not really happening, is the issue. So they are supposed to be inspected. Towne Chevy Chase does, does do their inspection of the dry wells. That, that is real. But we would need to do our own inspections because though the county is supposed to do them, they're not doing them.
Well, let, let me just add one thing here, is that, you know, when, when this whole process started, the town manager and I informed Councilor Fritzen about it, and he offered to do what he could. So I, I do think that while perhaps we need to think about the ways that we can cover that ourselves, we also want to work with our council member, our county council member, to see, you know, to make sure that the county does the very least they can do, and then we can supplement it. But, but, so I, I do think we should take advantage of that offer at some point. But this isn't, this isn't to contradict anything Councilman Barr is saying.
I have a question along that line. If, if we supplement what the county does with our own inspection person, our own compliance officer, legally, do the residents have to follow what we say? Or they can say, "Wait, you know what? County. We, you know, we're, we've been approved by the county, and county says our dry wells, our dry wells are fine," and then we come up and say, "No, they're not fine."
It's, we, we give a permit too, remember, so that if we've approved their dry well under our town permit, then we have the right to.
But like, so there's, there's the attenuation device that's in that doesn't, that doesn't drain water, and it was permitted by our town, and, you know, I don't think there's any. it was permitted by our town, and, you know, I don't think there's anything that our town can do to go back to them to say that it doesn't work because they got their permit.
Why can't we say it doesn't work? You, you know, then fix it. It's like anything.
Maybe the town attorney can answer that. What is our recourse?
Well, if if it's a violation of town code, that you know, the town has the ability to enforce the code, it depends on where the the violation has occurred. If you if you do impose stormwater drainage requirements at the permitting stage, then likely there's not going to be any, you know, violations unless someone's done work without a permit.
Yeah, right. I mean, for for the case that Shannon's talking about, the stormwater code was not in effect at the time that that building approval was granted. So we probably do not have the authority in the town ourselves to fault him on that, I'm afraid.
Right.
But if 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 somebody, just because we didn't give them a permit and in and the building is done and everybody's happy, except all of a sudden it pours and rains, you know, and and the next person is flooded out. Who's responsible here? Is it the homeowner homeowner that's flooding you out?
Well, if if there's been a violation of the county law, then the homeowner that has been impacted can ask the county to enforce. If there's no violation of town law, because there's no town law, no town permit, no violation of of county law, then there still may be a private right of action. Because generally speaking, one neighbor cannot create a nuisance for an abutting neighbor. And that's typically a neighbor-to-neighbor issue. The law generally provides that water is allowed to flow downhill. But, you know, if construction results in the artificial capturing of water and channeling it in an in an artificial manner to the neighbor, for example, a sub-pump collects water, and if that sub-pump discharge was then pointed at the property line and creating flooding at a particular point, that could be deemed an artificial capturing and conveying of water that creates a private nuisance and a cause of action.
So like, I think that maybe, I mean, you know, I feel like we should think about this on like very broad terms, like if we limit the number or the amount of impervious land in a lot, that might help us like be able to monitor and then in in return perhaps catch more stormwater than suggesting they put in these devices that, you know, aren't approved by the county and on a county level and that we also don't have anyone to monitor. And, you know, all of those things. Like, so if we were to say from the beginning, like, look, you can't have a separate driveway, garage, patio, pool, and gigantic house, you know, if we didn't say that from the beginning, maybe we would be, we would just limit some of this runoff organically from that.
So that's, it's a great suggestion. You're sort of jumping ahead on the list. Those would be new things that we could propose.
I mean, I think we need to like think holistically in terms of like how we want these, like all of these like things to be. You know, I don't think that we want to make it difficult for a neighbor to put up a back deck if they so desire, you know? I I don't think that we want to limit thoughtful renovations, you know? I mean, it depends what we want to limit as a town, I guess. Like, I I think that if you if you want to add on a back room, you should be able to, you know? But, you know, creating these McMansion houses with just impervious spots everywhere and tons of runoff that goes into our streets, like that's what, in my view, I would like to avoid.
Right. Yeah, I mean, we'll get there. That's what Steve is trying to say. At the moment, what Steve was trying to get at was the initial recommendation to what are repeated, Steve, because we kind of lost the thread there.
Well, um, I will, but before I forget in terms of the thread, Shannon, you also, your first point was about engaging the county. And not just compliance issues, but maybe rules issues. And I think this is where we are fortunate to have Mayor Slaven, and he knows the individuals. So I think I think it is very possible to get the county to change its rules and and improve its enforcement of those rules. But I I don't think that will be a speedy process. I would expect it to be a slow process that would require collaboration with other local jurisdictions. So I don't know if you had any comments or thoughts you wanted to say, Jeffrey?
Well, you you know, I think, what I think would be great is if we compiled a document that detailed outlined some of the the outstanding recommendations and conclusions that the committee made, because I think that Andrew, that Councilor Fritzen was very interested in that, because a lot of that stuff was groundbreaking and would be important to other municipalities and neighborhoods in his district. And then also to compile a document that that identifies where the county is lacking in in enforcing and and to present it to him and then and then ask him, ask him to help us. And then we can also present it to the other at-large members of the council.
Great.
Don't you think also, excuse me, one quick thing, don't you think other municipalities would be very interested in this because they have to be dealing with the same thing we are? The county blanketly gives without really consideration as to what we're going through.
Oh, absolutely, absolutely.
Let me add a little bit of information there. In fact, there is an attempt a meeting being held at the end of July in which the municipalities are all going to talk about stormwater issues and
Oh, great, great.
There is movement there.
Right.
Yeah, that we could, I think through the through the chapter, the MML Montgomery chapter, we, I think it's a a particular problem in the in our part of the county, and there are many municipalities in our part of the county, and I think they will be interested.
Yep. Okay, great discussion there, and thank you for that suggestion, Robin. Sorry, Shannon. Ron suggested we go back to or just refocus this discussion, this portion of the discussion on the current building, current town code and the stormwater management regulations. As folks may recall, when we adopted those regulations, they were, it was recognized that was just an initial step. It was never expected or intended to be the the permanent legislation or permanent code that is, we would get some lessons learned in the Stormwater Committee, but also develop more recommendations. So the first question here before us is, what steps can we or should we take to clarify the existing code? Before we start looking at, are there other steps we should take for a more holistic approach to building regulations to improve stormwater management? So I think there are questions of clarifying our intent, storage versus treatment, and what do we mean, and formalizing a tiered approach to addressing or achieving stormwater management. And I really like that because it would clarify for the the builders, for homeowners, what the council's expectations are, that the different actions they can take are not all equal in our eyes. We want to see conservation landscaping as a first approach. And if that's not possible because of the quality of the soil, for example, then we want to see structures holding the water. And then if that's not possible, we want to look at some sort of treatment where water would be held temporarily and then released. Just to spell it out. So we're not voting on this now, but this is to sort of set the stage for us to perhaps at our next work session, discuss further and provide direction to our town attorney. Debbie, did you have further thoughts there?
No, this is good, good, good discussion. Thank you.
Okay, and Rod, did you have anything more to say?
In terms of modifying the original code, yeah, there's one other thing that came from Neil Weinstein, in fact, which is to modify the statement where we say the one-year storm event is 2.6-inch rainfall. We should just say it's a one-year storm event and then put in parentheses after that. As of 2022 is defined as 2.6 inches, so that be changed and probably should be changed, actually, because like last Wednesday night, we had a 2.75-inch rainfall, and that's probably going to happen again this year.
Yep.
Um, but, you know, I mean, not to like keep going, but I only know what I know and about all the stuff. And like, to me, I mean, conservation, like landscaping is not going to be better than capturing water on someone's land and treating it and go off it.
Well,
It should be better if we can make it work.
It's both rain gardens and conservation landscaping. I mean, it and the idea behind them is both that they capture the water, and they do capture the water, rain gardens, especially conservation landscaping, not so well. But they also give back, that is to say, they are using it to grow plants. And that gives other advantages that dry wells themselves don't do. Obviously, plants are capturing carbon and absorbing more stormwater as they grow, so these are increase an increasing advantage as as plants grow.
Well, this is not, I mean, to catch the water that flows down our street would not be caught on a, you know, with a with
Right, and that's the tiered approach. That is, you know, you, it won't work in that circumstance. You have to go to the other solutions. That's what it boils down to.
Right. So how can we say that our first choice is this, you know, rain garden? If like, that's, you know, I mean,
If it's if it's possible, do it, is is what we're saying. In some, in some contexts, it will be possible. In some yards, it will be possible. In other yards, it won't be possible.
I think we're also looking at a combination approach. So if we use the, if we describe this tiered approach, sorry, too many approaches. They refuse the tiered approach. Maybe the first, I don't know, hundred cubic inches of stormwater would be handled by the rain garden, because that can be calculated, and then the rest needs to be handled by other other means. It's not as though they're just put in one rain garden and problem solved, because because you're right, Shannon, but there's a very specific, limited capacity that those gardens can hold.
And so we just, like, I just fear that everything is left to interpretation of, you know, trying to piece together, like, what is it that someone is trying to do, you know? It's just
We 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 do need guidance to Doug and to Matt on how to, basically, what it should be is what percentage of the one-year rainfall is captured by the rain garden? What's left to be captured by other devices? That's that's it. And so you, they get up to 100% by doing multiple things.
But I mean, in order to do like a rain garden, to put that in, like, we would have to know from the builders, oh, we're going to do 100 feet by X feet is going to be this, 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 in order to do all of those calculations. You know, because again,
They they already do that for, in fact, there's a more complex calculation for the county, which they go through. This would actually be a simpler calculation in the county's calculation.
And 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 none of this describe, none of what we're talking about would ever capture runoff. This is just the rain that falls from the sky.
Well, runoff is generated by the rain that falls from the sky, of course.
No, but I mean, how you interpret it in your own land.
Well, yeah, I mean, let me put it this way, you've got two things happening on your soil. One is the rain that's falling on your land. And that 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 is the only stuff that we can actually regulate. And now it's when when a builder, when an owner is building something, we can say, you got to control the rain that's falling on your land. You got to capture the rain that's falling on your land up to 2.6 inches. Or whatever the one-year storm is. The second thing is runoff that arrives in your land from somewhere else. And that's not something that we can regulate with this code. We're trying to approach it in other ways, and the Stormwater Committee has some suggestions on that, but the code code we're currently considering does not address that.
Right, but I, thank you, Ron, but the question, I think, question I hear Shannon asking is can a rain garden effectively handle like runoff from the roof in addition to the rainwater that's hitting it directly from the sky? Is that correction?
Yeah, yeah, I just, I'm having a hard time grasping like how to how this will all get, I guess, presented. And like, you know, if if I'm building a house, like trying to understand like how I can can do it. And then, more importantly, how can we enforce it? Because we're not, I mean, we're not experts on it.
I'll give you, I mean, my, I have a rain garden myself, okay, so it it handles 40% of the water from my roof up to a one-year rain event. And in other words, it captures it and disposes of it within 48 hours, which is the standard. It's getting better as the plants grow, and it's always capturing more because of that. And that is what rain gardens do. They do capture a lot of water, in fact.
But the 40% roof runoff, we're not asking that of whoever is applying now. We're saying we want 100%.
Well, right. And so the point is that the rain garden would capture 40%, and they'd have to have some way of capturing the other 60%. And that might be structural. It might be a dry well. It might be a rain tank if they can't, got no room for dry wells, that but certainly it's got to add up to 100%, yeah.
Yep. Okay. If if we're aiming to wrap up at 6:30, I'd like to move us along to at least broach the subject of new approaches we can take in the building code that echoing Shannon's vision would have sort of a holistic impact where the constraints on the construction would have also have a stormwater management benefit. Let's see, so for example, full replacements to drive driveways would require a permeable driveway. Committee could recommend approval of any variants for design incorporating a tool. Right, and some of the compliance questions, as condition of approval, applicants must enter into written agreement, maintenance agreement, which they legally commit during the tenure of their home ownership to maintain all runoff mitigation mechanisms. And we did that with the the tanks being installed on Trent. That's actually part of code for the county for tank inspections, but we could do that for things like rain gardens too, because sometimes rain gardens need need to be cared for, and plants need to be replaced in the rain gardens. Sorry, I'm just going through a list, and that has a list of 17 potential items. We could, this is not a code change, it would be a process change. We, the town could provide a free tree for, one free tree a year for residents who want to add trees on their property. I'm sorry, I'm looking for the one about like permeable surfaces. I'm not seeing them.
We already have that in the code, actually. Which, I mean, it's I have with P P permeable.
No, but but like, in our current code, we just, I discovered at the house in Trent, the impermeable patio does not count against any constraints we may have.
Right.
That's the kind of stuff I feel like we The kind of stuff I feel like we can change, you know, because a patio is impermeable. We should not, I mean, it should count as what it is.
And, and we need to tackle the recommendation that we're, that we're considering, or we've talked about briefly in the past was renovations that are less than a full teardown. So the, the idea here is perhaps renovation of existing home adding a hundred and fifty square feet or more of new impervious surface or a combination of surfaces, including steps for walking, oh, sorry. First, this vision, all new impervious surface constructed within a two-year period will be treated as cumulative. And we could, we would demand net zero runoff for any additions greater than a hundred, first, a hundred fifty square feet. So, so these are some ideas. We do not have time to discuss them all, but, but perhaps we can go around, people can talk about the few ideas I've I voiced here and I'll ask Matt to send this around. I think we need to clarify our existing stormwater code. I think it'll, it's invaluable that we tackle some of these other questions, like renovations less than a full teardown. And let's go around in a, well, actually, Robin, with your connection with the, given the stormwater committee, you might have more insights into, into these recommendations. Could you perhaps highlight or clarify some of these recommendations or add to my brief list, my brief summary?
Right. Sure. On the renovations, we, we just have to add language on renovations. Because at the moment, it only applies to new construction and we have to put in something on renovations too. Otherwise, we are tilting everyone to leave one brick standing and call it a renovation. Now, it, it's not exactly that, but that's what we get into. So the question is, are we okay with a one fifty square feet or do we want something else there? Some people suggested impermeable surface as a way to go. Also, that's, that's, so those are the things that are to be thought of there.
So this is sort of homework for folks to, to think about it.
That's, that's a big one. We, we need to do it because we, otherwise we're, we're giving ourselves a trap. On, on the permeable driveways, one other thing that we should do is match the county and say permeable driveways is the slope on the driveway is, is, is less than five percent. Or whatever the, if that's the way the county expresses it. The, the issue is that as the slope gets greater, even a permeable surface just runs water down over the surface. It doesn't capture any water. So there's no point in putting permeable driveway in there.
Okay. Thank you, Robin. Debbie? You're, you're muted, Debbie.
Um, I, I agree with Robin that we really have to tackle this whole idea of the renovation and the size. And I'd like to see us be strict on that. Yeah, because it's such a problem here. So I, I would like us to delve into that at some point. The other thing is, and maybe this is the elephant in the room, is the, the size of our new builds or the size of our renovations. I think it's time for us to take a really hard look at how much, how much land we are using to build our houses. And is it realistic that we can really control this runoff and with, with, with such big houses on, on a small amount of land? So I'd really like us to, to look at that and, and come up with a plan.
I, I think that's a, a great point, Debbie. Thank you for, for making it. And I think.
Could I, could I just flag a concern there? Cause I've seen Neil, Neil again did talk to the committee on this and have two contrasts here. One is, you know, so two homes intending to have fifty percent in, in permeable surface, right? Large homes. One of them is on a lot where all the remaining soil is highly permeable and highly absorbent. So they can put in rain gardens and goodness knows what dry wells, they can do the whole lot. The other one is on poor soil. It's all clay. It's a hilly lot. They can put in almost nothing, maybe a rain tank if we're lucky. If we have a standard of fifty percent permeable uniform, then we are discriminating against lots with poor soil. Basically. And so that's one of the challenges with having an impermeable surface standard. Presented permeable surface. To think about that too.
I don't really understand that.
Well, if.
Why are we discriminating against people with bad soil?
Well, or good soil. I mean, in other words.
Oh, good soil, we're discriminating.
Yeah. So if, if you've got poor soil and you're putting fifty percent impermeable, then water's gonna run off. That's that. If you've got good soil and fifty percent impermeable, no, you can capture it all. You're okay. And so why do we have percent impermeable when it depends upon the soil that's left?
Because we can't decide like, oh, you've got good soil, you've got bad soil, you've got good soil, you've got bad soil. I mean, we have to figure out like, you know, we either want, because so let's say you have good soil. I mean, you're still gonna then potentially bu- build a gigantic house that looms over the neighbors that you know, is a bit too big for the lot. It doesn't matter what their soil looks like underneath, in my opinion.
Well, no, but that's not stormwater at that point. That's.
A lot of it is stormwater. You know, sometimes it is and sometimes it isn't because someone's got better soil. And I, I think we need more of an even approach. I think so many of these houses are just too big for their lots.
Right. So I think, thank you, Ron. I think that's a good observation, Debbie, about the size of the houses. That is a potentially a more sensitive topic for the council to to develop codes on, although we've, and I see your hand, Shannon, just a second. But, but we have tackled that modestly with constraints on you know, allowing perturbances. I'm not using the right word, but things like windows to extend into the setback. So we started to constrain it. I think there's a trade-off. We just need to be cognizant of that if we if we im- impose rules that limit the the size of a house in terms of its footprint, houses might wanna go up. And to get the same total volume or whatever of within the house. And we've seen some issues with some very tall houses that I don't feel are in keeping with the character of the town. So in addition to, so, so anyhow, I, I think we should also consider the vertical dimension. I think the, the town attorney mentioned that. It's within our authority. I think we'd have to be prudent in how we proceeded there. And Shannon, your turn.
Um, so, but you know, the bulk of these people that are making these giant houses in the neighborhood. They have a giant house and then they have a giant garage and they have a giant driveway and they have a giant patio and they have a giant, you know, back deck or whatever on top of that. And so like, we're not, but if we limit the number in imperviousness space on there, they can buy, they can still build a house to their whole specification that I guarantee will be a gigantic house, you know, if they're using that plot of land. But they're gonna have to make some more choices in terms of like, well, what else can they have? You know what I mean? Like it's, they want everything. And so I still, it's not like we're saying you can only have a two thousand square foot house. Like, that's not what we're saying. We're saying, you know, you just have to might, you might have to make a little bit of a harder choice whether or not you wanna have the extra in-house movie theater or you want a back deck.
Right, right. Great discussion. We, we got all the way around. So my, my vision here is that we'll, we'll, we'll all, we'll, we'll think about this topic and I'll ask the town manager to forward the notes that he provided me to everyone. The next council work session will carve out a chunk of time to talk about this. And I think there is a lot here. And if we tried to tackle it all at once, I think we could we can end up spending a long time and not getting anywhere. So my preference will be to take this off, tackle this in some bite-sized issues with the first bite being revisions to the current code, just to clarify the language. And then we can look at like, things like renovations, but maybe there are some easy things we can add like the pools, dealing with pools. Anyhow, take a look at the list and I, I'm looking, I'm really excited about moving forward and making progress here. I think it has the potential to be a tremendous benefit for the town moving forward. And yeah, we're forward to working to you all on it. Any, any questions or comments for this one?
Okay. Well, thank you. Thank you, Mr. President. Thank you, council. And just to remind everyone, I hope to see all of you next Monday at noon. I can't believe it's already July fourth. You will each have a role to play on the agenda on Monday. I hope you're all gonna be there. And then, and then we have our council meeting on Tuesday at seven o'clock, seven o'clock. So see you all then. Thanks a lot.
Okay. Good night.
Thank you all.